Good morning, everybody. Prior to calling the meeting to order, we are highly privileged to have with us today Justice William Sellers of the Alabama Supreme Court to administer the oath of office to our newest trustee, Matthew Woods and Jasper. Mr. Woods, if you'd come forward.
You and Asher, thanks for being appointed by a very popular governor. It's been a good stand, I believe, for you. Place your hand on the bough, raise your hand. I am Matthew Woods. I am Matthew Woods. Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will support, I will support the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of Alabama. The Constitution of the State of Alabama. So long as I continue as citizen thereof, so long as I continue as citizen thereof, in that I will faithfully and honestly discharge the duties, discharge the duties of the office of the Board of Trustees. Of the office of the Board of Trustees. Of the Alabama Community College System. The Alabama Community College System. On which I am about to enter. On which I am about to enter. To the best of my ability. To the best of my ability. So help me God. Congratulations.
Thank you, Justice Sellers, for making time to be here this morning to receive my oath. I'm truly honored, humbled, to have the opportunity to serve my state in this role. I have a great respect for Mr. Frank Caldwell, whom served on this board admirably, and will do the very best of my ability to serve in the same manner. I'm excited about the future of the Alabama Community College System. We have a great opportunity and responsibility to meet the higher education needs of Alabamians. This system is a conduit for the advancement of workforce and industry while creating a path to a better quality of life for the many students it serves. To the Board of Trustees, the Chancellor, and his staff, I look forward to working with you to make this community college system the best in the nation. To the colleges within this system, I want to be your partner in helping your school meet and exceed the expectations that you, your communities, and this board have for your school. I'd like to take a moment to introduce some family that are here with me today. My father, Jim Woods, has provided me with a great example of how to be both a family man and businessman, and has helped create opportunities for me to serve in my community, and I'm certainly thankful for his example of him being here with me today. My lovely wife of almost 13 years, Brandy, is my constant friend and companion. She's my greatest supporter and source of strength. And our beautiful daughter Camden, who is eight years old, and she is happy to be here today, and she's made clear to me that she's happy to be missing school today. We're very proud of Camden, and I'm certainly glad that she's here to share this time with us today. It is not often that one is given the opportunity to serve an organization that has the ability to improve the way of life for so many, and I want to thank everyone here today for what you do to make your communities and this state a better place for all of us to live. I look forward to getting to know all of you better, and I want to thank you for this time and for the warm welcome and the kind remarks we received. Thank you very much.
Thank you for those inspiring words, Matthew. I'll now call the meeting, regular meeting to order of the Alabama Board of Trustees and the Community College System, and at this time I recognize President Matthew Rogers, who will give our indication.
Good morning. Thank you, Chairman, members of the board, Chancellor Baker. I'm delighted to give the invocation today. In the elevator coming up, Chairman Taft has said that I could give some words of inspiration, so I don't have any notes for that, but I do want to say that I have been on the job at Enterprise State Community College for almost six months now. I've made it six months, so that's a great thing, but I want to say that I'm inspired by the group of people that are here today. This is quite a family. The support that I have received from this office, from Chancellor Baker, to everybody in this office. I told my wife that I've never met a group of people that are willing to help, that really have a servant's heart. So I think I speak on behalf of all of the presidents that are in attendance today. This is quite a family, quite a group, Mr. Baker, that you have here, that you assembled and board. You should be very proud of the effort that they're making, especially to help the new guy coming on board to be a success down in Coffee County and Dale County. So thank you for the support that we received in Enterprise. At this time, I just want to say that every day is an opportunity. I talk about that with our staff and our students, but, you know, we want to view every day as an opportunity, not as an obligation, and I view today as an opportunity, and the work that is being done here is remarkable, and I'm a proud member of the Alabama Community College System, and I want to welcome you, sir, Mr. Woods, and welcome to the family. Something must be in the air. My son wanted to come with me today at State of School to attend the meeting, so something must be going around. But at this time, if you will, bow your head, please. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this day that you blessed us with. Thank you for these men and women that have dedicated their lives to the service of the State of Alabama, to our students, and to our instructors, and to our staff. Thank you for the opportunities that you blessed us with. Lord, we know that we can make a difference. Every step that we make, and the words that come out of our mouths, and the way that we act, and I just pray to God that we will always hold you first, and that others may see you through us, and God help us on our jobs, and help us to understand our communities, and to love our communities, and love the students and instructors that we come in contact with. That we know that at the end of the day that we're serving you, and we're serving a mighty God. Lord, just thank you again for this day. Thank you for the group that's here, and for their service to the State of Alabama. In Jesus' name, I pray. Amen.
Ladies and legends, to the life of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Nick Moore, who is the Education Advisor for Governor Ivey. Nick is new on board. Nick, good to have you. We look forward to working with you. Thank you for your presence.
I'd be remiss if I didn't. My idea was wire grass.
Good touch from left to right. Mr. Thompson?
Mr. Al Thompson?
Present.
Mr. Ronald Fan Troy?
Present.
Mr. Susan Boyd?
Present.
Mr. Matthew Woods?
Present.
Mr. Crystal Brown?
Present.
Mr. Milton Davis?
Present.
Mr. Chuck Smith?
Present.
Mr. Blake McAnally?
Present.
Mr. Jeffrey Newman?
Present.
Governor Kay Ivey. Mr. Chairman, you have the floor.
Thank you, sir. The next item is the Item 4's approval of the agenda. Due to a technical issue, appears that only the first page of the preliminary meeting agenda was posted to the system website. While the board did receive the full preliminary agenda, out of an abundance of caution, the Chair will entertain a motion to amend the meeting agenda to add the following items from Page 2. Action Item 8A2, Alabama Community College System Professional Liability Insurance. 8A3, Wallace State Community College Hansel, confirming the title of emeritus to Dr. Tumisa Smith. 8A4, Gaston State Community College Authorizing Resolution. 8A5, Alabama Community College System Self-Evaluation Resolution. Item 9, Personnel. 10, Chancellors Report. 11, Date and Location of Next Meeting. 12, Agreement. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Okay, there's been a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion? There being known, we'll move to a vote of the agenda as amended. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Is there anyone opposed? Agenda's approved. Item 5 is the approval of the minutes of the January 10th, 2018 meeting. Board members have received these minutes in advance of the meeting and have had time to review them. At this time, I'll entertain a motion. Motion by Ms. Brown, second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Any changes to the minutes of the January 10th meeting? Seeing them, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of the approval of the minutes of the January 10th, 2018 meeting, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Answer approved. Item 6, Public Commune. There's no one signed up. I also see that we have Leadership Academy from Jefferson State attending. Y'all, please, please stand and be recognized. So good to have y'all here. Thank you so much for your attendance and your interest in our system. Section 7, Academic and Student Affairs, Adult Education, Facilities, Fiscal, Information Technology, and Workforce Development. 7A1 is the allocation of 2017-2018 Industry Certification Initiative Funds. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Ms. Ford. Any discussion? There being known, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item 8A1 is the sale of FCC license and tower property for Gaston State Community College. This was on our work session agenda last month. Board members have had an opportunity to ask questions and become well informed about this. Is there a motion on this item? Motion. Motion by Mr. Fan Troy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. McAnally. There being known, we'll move to vote on the sale of FCC, to authorize sale, offer for sale of FCC license and tower property of Gaston State Community College. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item 8A2, Professional Liability Insurance for Alabama Community College System. Once again, this was on our work session last month. Is there a motion? Motion by Mr. Davis, is there a second? Second by Ms. Brown. Any discussion?
Thankful for the 5% decrease. They want to engage these negotiators you have, Chancellor.
Amen to that. David works at Jefferson. Good quality. There being no further discussion, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving Professional Liability Insurance for the system, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Item 8A3, Confirming the Title of Emeritus to Dr. Tumisa Smith at Wallace State Community College Hansel. Dr. Carlix read this, and Dr. Smith was recognized at our work session. Is there anything to add to that? If not, we'll move, is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith, second by Mr. Davis, to approve the confirming of title of emeritus to Dr. Tumisa Smith at Wallace State Hansel. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, Dr. Smith. Item 8A4, Authorizing a Resolution for Bond Issue for Gaston State Community College. This was covered at our work session last month as well. Is there a motion? Motion by Ms. Brown to approve that, second by Mr. Davis. Any discussion? There being known, we'll move to vote. All those in favor of approving this authorizing resolution for Gaston State Community College, please raise your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Item 8A5, Self-Evaluation Resolution for Alabama Community College System. This is compliance with SACs. This was presented at work session last month as well. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Smith, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fan Troy. Any discussion? Mr. Bates, anything to add to this?
No, sir.
Okay. We'll now move to vote on the Self-Evaluation Resolution. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Section 9, Personnel. Section 10, Chancellor's Report.
I'd like to begin the report. Jeff, he will come up with Mike. As you know, Jeff manages workforce and skills training programs, and that we try to find other things to keep him distant. I'd like for you to spend just a short few minutes kind of talking or explaining what we are doing as it relates to the skilled workers, training programs that is needed to meet the needs of Mercedes and the Tier 1 suppliers. Just quickly, simply. The reason I do this because I think it's kind of a significant step forward for the community college system to be asked by a major manufacturer. Will we do this? And I just want to explain how we approach it.
Sure. So, thank you, Chancellor. We met with President Mercedes recently, Chancellor and I did, and right now they're going through expansions of their Tier 1, Tier 2 suppliers, and this affects all the areas, all the counties between Tuscaloosa and Birmingham. So what we did is we actually rallied and pulled together a training proposal back in November, met with the Chief of Staff at the Governor's Office, the Chancellor and I did, presented to them, and then we had a first meeting yesterday with four colleges. So we have four colleges involved. It's Shelton State, it's Bevel, Lawson State, and Jess State, and we all came together. They need 4,000 employees, net new employees, within the next 18 months, and so what we're doing is we're actually, we've got a plan that we're going to actually probably feed into this system about a little over 10,000 people to net out that 4,000, and then it's going to be a great model. So we're going to be setting up sites all across those counties in between the two cities, working with all the colleges, working with Veterans Affairs, working with adult population, working with the partners and parolees, and working with our traditional students, and also dual enrollment, and to fill that pipeline. And the beauty of this is the Chancellor kicked off the meeting yesterday, how serious this is, and how we stepped up to the plate with one simple conversation with President Mercedes, and they know that we mean business, and so the good thing is to show the results and then take that results and actually use that for the Toyota Mazda, because that's going to be another massive need up there, and just in the Toyota Mazda area, based on conversations already, there's going to be a net new 12,000-plus jobs there, so we really need to ramp it up. So we're going to learn from things that we do at this rollout and then be able to take them north, but the beauty of this is it's a model we can use wherever. If it's in Baldwin County for a massive project, or if it's in Mobile area or what, at the Wire Grass, we can take the same model and use it across the state, so we're very pleased to do that.
Any questions?
Are you going to roll that out in Northern Alabama at the same time? What's your schedule?
It's going to phase in, so we're going to get the Birmingham to Tuscaloosa program going immediately. Actually, we've already started it, and then we're looking at new locations. We've got a lot of stretch goals for all of our colleges to meet some attendance, and then what we'll do there is we'll be rolling that out later on, probably midsummer to the northern part of the state.
In Baldwin County, hopefully.
Baldwin County, hopefully. We're lucky to get a large project there one day. We can implement there as well. Do you want me to go into some of the things with the digital media team real quickly?
I was going to ask you to.
Okay, all right. Well, thanks to the board. Thank you for allowing us to create some shared services here in the system office with our needs to have a digital media team that actually resides in workforce area and academics, where we can design, develop, customize training for our companies. And an example is Enterprise State, is actually, we met with a company, and they're going to, we're going to provide training for every one of their maintenance employees. Actually, they're going to offer to every one of their people in Troy through Enterprise, and it's a combination of workforce, ATN, and Enterprise, and so they're going to train several hundred folks there, and this is just the very beginning of what we can do there, so. But the same team that we have that can design, develop that training program also develops marketing programs. So I want to highlight first a couple of people that work in this team. It's a shared service team between Boone, Canard's team, and my team, and then I want to show you three quick videos of just some people that have gone through our colleges, and then we'll send out a copy. We're only going to show three. We have several that cover all of the different industry sectors from healthcare, construction, you name it, so I'm just going to show three of them. If we can tee that up real quickly. So the first one is going to be Alexis Scott. She's, was a dual enrollment student down in Mobile, and she went through Bishop State and dual enrollment, and it really changed her life, and then she's now a biomedical student at ASU. The next one will be Wes Kirkpatrick. Wes was going to be a business major at Southern Union, and then he started talking to a lot of his professors there and got into machining. We'll tell his story, how he's doing really good. And then the last, but not least, is a student from Ingram, Ingram State Technical College, how that person was able to get skills and then roll into a job the day that he was released from prison. So before we do that, real quickly, Rachel, Rachel's here. Rachel, could you stand up also? So this is the team of, we have a small team, but they're mighty. Also Clyde White Hancock.
Yes.
And our latest person is Clinton Bourgeois, who's videotaped and also... Our other person, Rick Dupree. Rick's now at the Renaissance working our booth for the Workforce Council, so Rick's took one for the team, so can we get that running real quickly?
I was taking that dual enrollment. In math class, I really didn't know that it would eventually help me be able to pay for some of my things in college. I would never got my scholarship when I said I had while I was Bishop State. I never knew exactly what I wanted to do when I was in high school and went to NASA and saw what they were doing. I realized that I really wanted to be an engineer. Dual enrollment kind of gave me what I wanted to do. Received scholarships for other schools, but Bishop State gave me the most money. They paid full tuition, were going to cover my books, fees, and since I did dual enrollment with them, I already had a foot in the door. I knew some people. I already had connections there that I wouldn't have had if I already went to a four-year college. Bishop State's friendly atmosphere had me open up and know that my teachers are actually there to help me and that I can use any tool I can to push forward and do better.
So that was for Bishop State. I was going for a business degree. Some of my friends graduated, and they had a real difficulty finding jobs. Two guys with degrees that were very similar to mine were working in sandwich shops or towing moving boxes, and I decided I wanted to go a different way. I started at Southern Union and got into the computer modeling program. From the very first day, I had every instructor, there was personal phone number. They were very interested in making sure that we understood what we were doing. Every piece of homework that we got wasn't just out of the back of the textbook. It related to something that we wanted to do. We would pull a blueprint from a big stack that they had, "I want to make this part," and then they would relate that into their lesson. When I finished Southern Union, I was automatically applying for the top level of entry-level jobs in my field. When you walk in as an entry-level tech on the floor, they'll teach you how to debur a part, they'll teach you how to polish a surface, or how to clean things, but what they don't teach you is how to code. They don't teach you how to actually write these programs, and most of the program at Southern Union was learning how to read and write and interpret that code. What most people have to do to start out when they get into manufacturing is they start out running a saw, driving a truck, shipping parts, and the first day that I walked through the door at the facility that I work at now, I was running mail. One year down the line now, I'm probably where somebody who didn't have the head start from the two-year college, I'm probably the equivalent of five or six years in. I have watched videos of rockets launching, knowing that an oil impression of my fingerprint is on that machine, and to leave that mark on it is really, really cool.
And the last video is from Ingram State.
I decided I wanted to make things look good. Wanted to have a career for myself, you know, to be able to help with my kids, even though they're almost grown. You know, I still needed to be able to supply for them and my grandkids. I got out of prison December 13th, 2016. I had a job interview here at 9:00 that morning, and I started two days later. They made you feel comfortable. They made you feel comfortable. You know, they made you feel as, you know, even though I've been locked up for seven years at that time when I started school. You know, it just made you feel like a human again. They teach you and prepare you for every aspect that you're possibly going to approach or confront when you get out. In our speech class, he actually taught us how to go to job interviews, what to expect in an interview, and basically how to express ourselves in the interview, and be able to speak in front of people, you know, not to be nervous. So they really do help you try to get a job before you get, by the time you get out. Matter of fact, most of my tools that I have today came from England. They gave, you know, they bought $200 worth of tools when I got out. Still using them today, you know, the air ratchets and things of that nature, the body hammers, different types of tools that you needed to get started in this trade. All they ask is you apply yourself. The only thing that can hold you back from getting a trade while incarcerated. That's the only thing, yourself.
So we're using these in social media through your iPhones or your phones, and also for future work. We're going to have a major marketing campaign. We're rolling out Mercedes, and then we're going to have a massive one for Northern Alabama when we get involved in that, so. And I'll just leave it at this. Chairman, you recognize Nick Moore from the Governor's Office, new Executive Director for Educational Alliances. He's going to be our next testimony. He was a graduate of Enterprise State and then went straight to Harvard. We're glad that he's back here in Alabama working with us, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chairman. You know, you watch these videos, and that's why we do what we do. It's real hard. I ask Ed why we need to keep him forward. Ed is new here. He's here as a result of the rainfall in the Community College System and more program matic hunting. We are undertaking the process to put in place a more deliberate and sophisticated process to talk about, to plan, track...
process to talk about, to plan, track, to have facility programs across the state. And with that, Ed, I'll look to go ahead and make your presentation, and then we'll have questions.
Thank you Chancellor for the opportunity to be here today. Thank you to the board. I don't want to chance to speak, but echoing Mr. Woods' comments, it is a privilege to be part of the organization. It is doing so much to help the people, citizens of Alabama. The Chancellor asked me to speak for a few minutes today, talking about my role as Facilities Director, what I'll be doing, what we hope to do in the future. Last week, you each should have got an email copy of the full job description. For the sake of time, I might go through that one by line. Certainly Cam would like one too. But in a nutshell, what my role is, is as the Facilities Director of the Community College System, to oversee and manage a system that optimizes our capital project delivery processes. As the community college system evolves and progresses, our facilities must comply. And that has to happen to live. This is my job, actually, to manage the processes that will deliver the facilities that you need to execute the programs for the state. Specifically, some of my role's responsibilities include serving as appointee contact here at the system office for all issues related to facilities, construction, improvement, renovation, things of that nature. And to serve as a liaison between the system office and the various institutions and organizations within the community college system. One of my first tasks would be to actually develop and gain approval for and implement and manage a capital projects control system. You, the board, have to have control over our capital projects. It's important now, but if we were to undertake the accountability program that has been proposed in years to come, it'll be an absolute disaster. Along with that, we have to have formalized reporting procedures. Not only is it good enough to have you approve what's happening, but you also have an obligation, we have an obligation to let you know what is going on with those projects as they progress from conception, planning, to design, and on through construction and term. One of my key jobs is to actually be a liaison between the community college system and the opportunity building. They are our partners in anything we build. And having a good relationship with them, and building that relationship and operating that relationship is part of my job. The Chancellor, my first week here, sent out a memo saying that I needed to be involved in projects from the very beginning. One of the very first things we have to do is make sure we're bringing the right designers to the table for each project. Good products come from good design, and good design comes from good designers. If we don't start off with the right people designing our work, the likelihood of success on that project diminishes significantly. Leveraging access to technical professionals. As the Chancellor mentioned, I'm not a community college system employee. I work for a company called Four Program Management. And we have an entire staff of individuals and specialists who specialize in various aspects of construction, project delivery, on behalf of owners. People like cost estimators, project managers, and even auditors to look at the books once a job is done. There will be times where we'll need to access those people to contribute and help with the community college system projects. In addition to that, external experts. Hopefully, we'll be selecting designers that have the in-house capability of handling the jobs we give them. There will be times when we need to step out and actually bring in experts handling unique situations. Part of my job will be to find and engage those people on behalf of the system. Capital needs assessments, those efforts have been ongoing, but they continue. And as the, as the system progresses, as our priorities evolve, our facilities needs will continue to evolve. Maintaining good visibility of what we have, what we need, to meet priorities set up on the board, are another one of our responsibilities. My job is not to manage projects from this office. Projects will still be managed at the local level. But my job is to assist and support the colleges, universities, and institutions as we implement and as we execute those projects at every phase of a project, from planning, budgeting, programming, all the way through to construction and term. And each step along the way to identify and make those best practices that'll give us the best results on each job. I'll probably regret this one, but other duties as assigned. When I was a contractor, I always say to the seat, contractors are coordinated on this job, other duties. But the truth is, construction is very unique. We can't always predict what's going to happen. When something unique does occur, I hope to be the person that solves it. I want to free the time of educators to educate, administrators to lead. And when something unique pops up at facilities, it needs to be my job to handle it. What we're trying to achieve ultimately is better project control out of work trust systems. I want you to have the visibility and selective control over projects that you need. Along with that, provide better data decision-making. Chancellor has used numerous occasions to phrase data-driven decision-making. And there's an enormous amount of data regarding our facilities that can and should be presented to you in an organized manner so you can make better decisions for the community college system. Better line of scope, budget, project budget scope. One pain point that has been pretty common across the system that I've heard is that our projects on bid day are coming in significantly different than our budgets. If we do the things we're talking about, the end-to-end controls along the way, particularly the design process, that problem will be correct. It will never be totally eliminated, and it will be corrected. Better economies of scale, better project depth. As an entire system that spans the entire state, I believe we cannot execute projects campus by campus or college by college. We have to look and find opportunities across the boundaries of institutions, across the boundaries of campuses, and find ways to execute projects in ways that are beneficial to the system and more cost-effective. Better project delivery timelines. The traditional measure of a successful construction project is on time, under budget. We focus a lot on the budget aspect of project success. We can't ignore project timelines. When we commit to a college, we're going to deliver a project by a certain time, there are certain steps we have to take along the way to actually do that. With academic institutions, we typically need facilities ready mid to late summer so they'll be ready for fall semester. If we're delivering projects mid-October, that is of no good in the system. We're going to take steps to make sure we don't do that. Improved interactions with the agency. They are our partners. I understand we have a good relationship with them now. Continue to build that relationship and have a better relationship. Better management of project risk. Every job has risk. Anyone that says you have a trouble free projects simply doesn't have the structure. To ignore projects or to ignore risk and to hope that it materializes is a responsible management approach. We're going to take deliberate steps to actually find those risks and to solve them with least cost and the least time impacts to the overall project. Better designers are better contractors. Not everyone is qualified to design and not everyone is qualified to build their projects. We need to discover that before design starts or before construction starts. It does us no good, I think it happens through design, realize that the designer is out of his league. It does us no good. It can happen through construction and have a contractor fail to perform. We have to turn to the bonding company to resolve it. We can take steps to prevent that rather than result. And most importantly, we want to operate our facilities as a well-coordinated, coherent system, not as individual projects, but as a system that supports the overall community college system. Some things we need to get there. The foundation of all of this will be capital projects controls process. If we don't have a process for executing projects, a process for giving the board control over those projects, everything else we do will be made. Similarly, we have to have a standard reporting procedure. I don't intend to bring every issue to the board for action without doing it to provide regular updates through the Facilities Committee and ultimately to the entire board, so you can have visibility where needed and take action where appropriate. We have to leverage technology, as with everything else, and why technology has changed in construction and engineering, they'll continue to do so. The days of managing projects over email and Excel spreadsheets is long gone. As we look at the ERP system for the entire ERP accounting system of the community college system, there are other project management and construction management applications that we need to look at to make sure that we're delivering projects on time and under budget and with the least resources we have to utilize. Most importantly, we've got to continue to evaluate and make sure we're in alignment with where the board wants us to be. The things we implement today, we want to implement, we'll execute, we must always evaluate and make sure that the actions that we are taking have the intended outcomes and ultimately they're meeting the goals set forward by the board. That is the end of what I wanted to say. But again, I want to say thank you, thank you for the opportunity to be here. More importantly, thank you for the opportunity simply to work within an organization that has been so much good for the state of Alabama. What questions, Mr. Chancellor?
I would just say I'm thankful for what you're here. Everything you've laid out are things that made me very happy. I think we all can say that. The process is a significant process. It's a big part of what we do. It's a significant part of our capital budgets, obviously, every year. You talked about the selection of design firms. And I've been the design business myself. I appreciate the fact that you want to be involved in fronting and selecting these firms and that we're going to find people who have a proven mission of meeting budgets and meeting schedules, limited chapter orders, and doing things that make our projects successful. And I, you know, I'm thankful that we are going to pursue things in that way rather than just hiring designers based on relationships alone.
That's not a responsible approach. I know you've heard this before, but good design pays for itself and bad design costs 10 times what it's on the paper. We have to find the most qualified people for each job.
Happy you're here. I'm happy to hear what we're experiencing.
I'd like to echo what you said. And you know, we have the Centers Committee that's like, I'm out and meeting that guy here. All I look for is your leadership.
Chancellor, we, we had several discussions. I think we've put this thing together on where we've been wanting to go. And I look forward to where we're going. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ed. I would add to this because I think it's important for the community of people to understand. The activities that we are undertaking and will be for the next significant number of months with implementation of the ERP system, its new data collecting system, this new, and becoming more and more data-driven and responsive to the committee's legislative effort on the performance-based project. It probably makes all of us sometimes a little uncomfortable because it's forcing us to look at things maybe differently, to be more analytical in the decision-making process. And sometimes we may even get a little aggravated with it. I suspect that'd be some of that. I've heard occasionally that they may be. But I'm sure that we all are joining hands to march forward in this because I am convinced of this. And I believe that we have a lot of support. And I was looking around to see if Liz was here. Did he, okay, come back. I, I think it's important for people to understand, and we are beginning trying to pass the message along and get the message out there. We haven't done that very well in the past. But we have a lot of good things happening and a tremendous amount of effort has been put in, school by school, in making a lot of these changes. And we've had committee after committee after committee meeting. But I think over the course of the next, I'd say, 36 months, you will see a transformation of how we decide what we're going to do in the system. You'll see a lot of growth in the performance of the student body and the attendance of the student body as well. And as we move along, I think we do have the support of the legislative body and the Governor's Office. I feel comfortable with that, and that's important to note. But it's only that way because our schools have pulled together and supported the movement of this board, and we still have a lot of work in it. I just thought I'd mention that. It's something I've got to deal with. Then would you give us a quick update on the budget process?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Older, shorter, a little bit earlier last time. So the budget was passed by the House Representatives on the education budget yesterday after not a whole lot of debate. So it's kind of a weird, weird time. Everybody's getting along. Grange. But yeah, the budget, as the Chancellor mentioned, we did get a healthy increase in the budget this year of around $16 million, new dollars. Most of which, the bulk of which is in O and M. There's a couple other smaller increases. But of course, now the budget goes to the Senate. Of course, that does include a 2.5% pay raise for all community college employees. That's an important note to make. So now that the budget and related bills go to the Senate, where the process will start over, and I'm sure they will have some additions and subtractions, and it'll go to a conference committee where they'll work, work, work it out, pass the final version probably sometime mid to late March is what I would guess. That's where it's at. We're still only halfway through the process, and I will keep everyone updated as we continue to move forward.
Let's see. We are, upon adjournment, we'll reopen for our work session pretty much immediately. There'll be no break. Our next board meeting will be March 14th in this room. Once again, I want to welcome Matthew Woods. I'm just so pleased to have you and my passion for working with you. Thank you for, your family members for being here. We're honored to have y'all's presence. Jeff State Leadership Academy, thanks again for y'all's attendance here and your interest in what's going on. We wish you well and thank you for what you're doing. And to everyone in attendance, thanks for your interest in what we're doing. I wish you all a happy Valentine's Day. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion is second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. We stand adjourned.